Members of the public can make public comments by audio or by audio and video as permitted by the Zoom Electronic Communication Platform. Now, while in this Zoom meeting, press on raise hand on the bottom left corner of the computer screen or mobile device. Raise hand allows participant to notify the host that you would like to speak without interrupting them. If you are calling in, press the online on your telephone to raise your hand. Central Planner Board will be mindful of the number of items on the agenda and will move it exponentially as possible to complete the agenda. However, due to the amount of development required, Board review and the complexity of projects, it may not be possible to hear every item if the meeting runs later than 11:00 P.M. In the event that the agenda is not complete by 11:00 tonight, the Board will finish hearing the applications that are in the process of listening to, but no new application will be called after that item is completed. Any applications were not heard by that time will be rescheduled to the earliest available date. The meeting of the Central Planner Board is now called to order by the Secretary local.
Commissioner Jordan. We have his absent Commissioner Bias.
Rest in.
Commissioner Purdy. We have his absent Commissioner Scott Rowntree. We have his absent Commissioner Disova.
Here.
Commissioner Timmons. I know he just joined.
Come back to.
Come back to. Come back, okay. Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Austin.
Present.
Commissioner Timmons.
Present.
Thank you. Coach Richard.
Here.
Chair Richardson.
Here.
We have a quorum chair.
Thank you. Let's move to item number one, CPP 24-105, all the applicants available.
Yes, we have Mr. Vallozi joining us.
Good evening, everyone. Noemi Vallozi on behalf of the application CPP 24-105 for Cala Development. Mr. Chairman, we're requesting an adjournment of this one.
Sure. Madam Secretary, what's the next available date?
June 23rd.
June 23rd, my friend.
Thank you, sir.
You got it, and you will notice will be preserved, and we'll see you in June. All right, let's move to CPP 24-100, which is 218 Fremont Avenue. Mr. Vallozi.
Good evening, everyone, once again. Noemi Vallozi on behalf of the application CPP-24-100 for the applicant 266, Dayton LLC. I am looking for Mr. Fernandez, Mr. McDonough.
They should both be joining us now. They're both on, Mr. Vallozi.
Thank you. If we can have Mr. Fernandez sworn in, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening, Mr. Fernandez. Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application.
Jorge Fernandez, F.E.R.N.A.N.D.E.S., Registered Architect, Business Address 75 Parker Street, North, New Jersey.
You're accepted by the Board. Please continue.
Thank you.
Mr. Fernandez, have you reviewed the Planner's Report on this matter?
I have.
Okay, and are we able to comply with all his conditions?
Yes.
Okay. Did you review the engineering report?
I have, yes.
Okay, and are we good there, George?
Yes.
All right. What about the Shore and Water Report?
We can comply with the requirements as well.
Now, Mr. Fernandez, as part of complying with the planning, the Planner's Report, we reduced this from a four-family to a three-family. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and we did not unfortunately submit the new plans on time, but you basically just took off a floor, correct?
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, I would request that Mr. Fernandez present his plans as Exhibit A of today's meeting and get them to everybody as soon as possible.
Understood. Totally noted.
Mr. Fernandez, if you can take us through your presentation.
Sure. Loading it up.
If I may, Chair, Mr. Fernandez, you have it loading. Do you mind letting us know the revision date and the number of pages if possible?
Sure. The revision date will be four 4:07, 2025, and the number of pages are 10.
Thank you so much.
I hope everyone could see the screen.
Now we can't.
Okay, so whereas before we were proposing a four-family structure, now we're proposing a three-family structure, and really, we eliminated the variances for lot size and for lot width. Whereas 2,500 square feet and 25 feet in width are permitted for a three-family house. The site plan that we're proposing is a on page S2, and we have here the proposed building, which is 22 feet in width, 70, 70 feet in depth. We have a 16-feet front yard setback and a 14-feet rear yard setback. We have a three-foot side yard setback on the northern property line and zero-feet setback on the southern property line. The, the front will be, will have a entrance stair stoop, and will also have a grass area with a proposed onsite tree for the, for the front of this building. And in the rear, we have a concrete area where the tenants of the building can use for recreation. I'll go into the floor plans. The floor plans are, we're going to have, again, the three-story building with a basement. The basement is accessible via the main stairs. We'll have a mechanical room in the basement and also a recycling area in the basement, and this will be used by the tenants of the, the three units above. The first floor has a three-bedroom apartment with a office, two bathrooms, a mechanical room with laundry, and a living dining area. And we have on the second floor and third floor as well, three-bedroom apartments with office and the living dining area, two bathrooms, and the mechanical closet with a laundry facility. The largest bedroom being the master bedroom, 185 square feet, and then the smaller bedrooms, 120 square feet. The office is 108 square feet.
George, what's the square footage of each apartment?
Each apartment is essentially 1,540 square feet.
Okay.
So we have the elevation, we have a three-story. To the top of the ridge, we have 34 foot, nine inches. We have the cedar vinyl siding in the front and vinyl siding on the sides and rear. And then we have enough 10% glazing on the northern elevation, 0% on the southern elevation, as that is on the property line. We have 10% on the rear elevation glazing, and then we have 21 out of 30% on the front elevation, so that would require a variance. That pretty much concludes my testimony towards the architecture. I'm open to any questions.
Here, we have two pantries, Ms. Juma and Charles Trappacante. See that with us?
Good evening, members. Nana Juma, zoning officer speaking. I have a question for the architect.
Yes.
Have you submitted these plans to our office?
No, they were not submitted.
Did you notice for a three-family, because my variance, I'm sorry, my determination is based on a four-family. All of the reviews to the board are based on a four-family. I guess that question is for your attorney. Did you notice the public for a three-family or a four-family?
Ms. Juma, it's Noemi Vallozi for the record. Originally, we had applied for a four-family in taking into consideration the architect's, the Planner's Report, we reduced it to a three-family. So all of our original notices went out as the original application for a four-family. This was a change that just occurred at the last minute.
So when, I don't believe we present new applications to the board the day of the hearing, but my question is, do you know the date of the Planner's Report?
The Planner's Report, I'm looking at it, says March 19th, Ms. Juma, and it's not a new application, it's an amendment to the application.
And what is the date of this revision?
Mr. Fernandez?
The date on the revision is April 7, 2025.
So the report to use dated March 19th and the revision is dated April 7th, but we haven't received the plan. Mr. Chair, just so you are aware, your, your Planner's Review, mine zoning determination, and if I'm not mistaken, the Engineering Department's review are all based on a four-family, not a three-family.
Mr. Barry. Let's go to Mr. Barry's corner, Mr. Beck.
Mr. Barry, do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, you heard the concerns of the zoning officer. Would you like to weigh in, sir?
Sure, so certainly, we would have appreciated having the revisions in advance of the hearing so that we could have updated reports. That said, it's not uncommon for applications to change during the course of the hearing. In this case, they're eliminating some variances and reducing the scale of the project, which is something that I think we've seen with other applications in different forms. So I'm not sure technically whether it's a, it's a notice issue. I mean, as a matter of practice, we like to have the application materials ahead of time so that we can ensure that the reviews are looking at the latest plans, but I'm not sure if there is a technical or legal issue with the applicant modifying in response to previous comments and, and a hearing, this is really a continuation. They did appear previously and presented testimony on the prior plans and received feedback, and now they're back with revisions based on that, so seems like it's in the flow of the application. Mr. Beck, do you have a, any thought on that?
Yes, I do recall that we asked the council to go back, and it seemed to be there was some discrepancy, and that discrepancy, there, there seemed to be a problem with the density, et cetera, et cetera, and it was recommended that perhaps they look at reducing the size to less than a four-story, four-family building. And since it's de minimis, it's, I don't think the notice provision applies that they would have to renotice or whatever. They're reducing the scale, and it's something that we may have encouraged them to do. I don't have a transcript before us, but I do have some slight recall that perhaps when we first heard the application, we asked them to adjourn it and come back with something that was less than the, the size that they were asking.
Thank you, Mr. Beck. Thank you, Mr. Barry. I want to recognize Commissioner Rowntree has joined us. Mr. Trappacante, you have your hand up, sir.
Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Trappacante. Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give this board shall be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Just briefly state your name and affiliation.
My name is Charles Trappacante. I'm a principal engineer and a professional engineer. I work for the city in north Department of Engineering. My license is active and in good standing with State Board.
Floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Fernandez, in the Department of Engineering's report to the Planning Board dated March 18th, on page two, item two, survey, room number eight, survey indicates an existing sidewalk that runs along the south side yard property line of the subject lot and is within the subject lot that provides access to and from the rear yard with joining lot five, block 262 located to the south. Applicant property owner shall provide testimony to the board as to what ingress egress easements exist within subject lot six, block 262. For the benefit of the property owners of joining lot five, block 262 located to the south. If no easements approvals exist, applicant property owners shall provide additional testimony to the board as to the future disposition of this existing sidewalk encroachment, should the board approve this application. Can you address that, Mr. Fernandez?
Yes, the, there's no easement to that encroachment, as far as I'm aware, and that will be removed.
All right.
No further questions. Thank you.
Sir. Okay, Mr. Vallozi, next one.
If we can have Mr. McDonough sworn in.
Good evening, Mr. McDonough. Do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give this board shall be truthful?
Yes, I do, Mr. Beck.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation and, and put on the record whether your license is current and in good standing.
Sure. Hi there, everyone. My name is John McDonough. My business address is 101 Gibraltar Drive in Parsippany, New Jersey. My license as a professional planner here in the state of New Jersey and on the national level is current and in good standing.
You're accepted by the Board. Please continue.
Thank you. Mr. McDonough, if you could take us through the variances?
Sure thing. Importantly here, we're in the C2 zone. We're dealing with a permitted use in the zone. The use complies, the density complies, the height complies, the parking complies. In Mr. Barry's original report, back in March, there were about 10 or so variances listed, and the applicant has essentially cut that in half with the revisions. We've gone from a a four-family to a three-family, and we'll show how nicely this application is going to improve the site and improve its overall integration with the neighborhood. Mr. Chair, this is going to be a three-page exhibit, just to make a record here as to site context. No email, A1 for the record?
It's going to have to be B1, because Mr. Fernandez's drawings are A1.
Got it. Okay, so B1 for the record, three pages. Going to show you that the subject lot is an interior lot on a developed street. We've got a vacant lot, which is obviously not contributing anything positive to the neighborhood. As I said, we're dealing with a lot that now is a three-family, complied with the requirement of 2,500 square feet. So that variance for the four-family has gone away, the lot width variance has gone away as well. This next page, sheet number two of B1, just gives a little bit of a 3D aerial bird's eye perspective. Again, showing how this property is sort of a missing tooth in the neighborhood. We're going to fill that void with a building that is compatible with the surrounding landscape in terms of mass and scale and the overall proportion of the building. And then finally, when we were out there in March, this is what you saw, again, a vacant lot that is prime and ready for redevelopment and a development here that is certainly going to be in scale with those other buildings that we see. It's a scale back from what was in front of the board before. We know the land use process is supposed to be interactive, where the board makes comments, public makes comments. Applicant has responded here in a nice way, reminding the board that this building type was originally replicated off of a four-family by the same applicant that was recently approved on Littleton. The applicant has taken that and scaled it back, reminding the board that other project was in the R3 zone. This is actually in the C2 zone, which means it's even better, to the extent that no parking relief is required. As I said, the use complies, density complies, height complies, and parking complies. The nature of the use here caters to families, which is going to advance that planning goal to provide for a variety of uses according to the needs of all New Jersey citizens. We'll reconcile this under the balancing test, the pull-in case, where the benefits of the application as a whole would substantially outweigh any detriments. Public benefits here are pretty clear: new housing, variety of housing types, positive aesthetics, efficient land use, and the elimination of a vacant lot. That all comes back to our land use law purposes A, G, H, I, and M. We know that this is going to be concentrated around the transit amenity, and it is good planning to concentrate people around transit amenities, which is the whole spirit of your, your C2 zone. The negatives associated with this application have been mitigated by the plan refinements. Again, changes to the facade, changes to the overall scale of the building, slightly shifting the building to better fit and integrate with the neighborhood. And then, based on all of those changes before the board, I think we can certainly conclude that all relief can be granted without any substantially adverse impact to the public or to your zone plan. With that, I would offer that the criteria for approval are met, and therefore approval is warranted here. That's all I have on direct, Mr. Chair.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Vallozi, did that complete your presentation?
It does, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Commissioner, any questions or comments? Here, any questions or comments from the public?
Chair, Ms. Juma has her hand raised.
Okay, yep, Ms. Juma.
Good evening again. Being as though this is my first time saying these things, would you mind bringing up the elevations again?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Fernandez, George.
The elevations.
It looks like you reduce the height of the, the structure to three stories. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Mr. McDonough, if you don't mind, can you go over or list and call out the variances that your applicant is seeking tonight? Which variances were eliminated, so that I'm clear?
Sure. Ms. Juma, I'm going to take you back to Mr. Barry's report. I could go back to your zoning analysis if need be, but only because I have it marked up here on Mr. Barry's report. Number one and number two are gone. They were variances for lot size and lot width. I still have the next three in Mr. Barry's report for front yard setback, side yard setback, and rear yard setback. I'm going to let George give you the actual numbers, because I don't think I, I caught them in terms of the changes from the prior. And then we also have excessive lot coverage and impervious, I'm sorry, excessive coverage by building and excessive lot coverage, which I believe are the same as before. They were listed in Mr. Barry's report. In terms of lot coverage or building coverage, 67% proposed, 55% permitted, and then lot coverage, 70% permitted, 91% proposed. I don't believe that has changed, but I'll certainly yield to Mr. Fernandez. And then the last three on Mr. Barry's report, odd transparency and parking I have as eliminated. So again, I will yield to Mr. Fernandez for any refinements in that regard.
So what I have here for the Planner's Report, the minimum.
Excuse, excuse me, just one moment. This is John Barry. And my, my report was based on different plans. Why don't we just go through what you have on yours and not worry about what the report says?
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Okay, so the the front yard setback, we are proposing 16 feet. That is a variance, as the other properties have, I believe, 18 feet. The side yard setback, we have three feet minimum, and we have three feet and zero feet proposed, so we have three feet on the north side, zero on the south side. So the zero feet would be a variance. And then the rear yard, 14, 30 feet is required, and we are proposing 14 feet. So that would remain a variance. The maximum lot coverage by building, 55% would be permitted. We are proposing 61%. That is, remains a variance. Maximum impervious lot coverage, permitted 70%, proposed 91%, so that remains a variance. And the front facade transparency, we have a 30%, which is required, and we're proposing 21%. So that remains a variance.
Ms. Juma?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Madam Secretary, any persons from the public wishing to speak on this application?
Yes, we do have one. Apologies. I may have missed it if we didn't mark the Planner's Exhibit as Exhibit B.
Thank you, Chris. Yeah, I was going to mention that, just because I moved a little quickly. I think we called it B1 for the record.
B1, okay.
This exhibit is A1.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. We do have one member of the public here.
Get that person sworn in, and they'll have three minutes to speak.
In the future, we're going to have to swear everybody in if they're going to give testimony. This, who is, who is lined up to speak right now?
There's one person. She's on, Dan.
Okay, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give? She'll be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Commissioners and everyone. My name is Denise Sweller for the Follow Pavilion Apartments, North, New Jersey. So I have a question, I will have two or three. The recreation room that we spoke of, would that have a full bath or a half bath? I'm sorry if I missed that.
George Fernandez here. I can answer that. We'll, our basement does not have a bathroom.
Okay, so the rec, the recreation room does not, will not have any type of restroom or anything?
Correct.
Okay, would there be laundry facilities in each apartment?
Yes, each apartment has its own laundry.
Okay, and the fire? And they will have, you know, one exit, two entrances, and for one, you know, for egress, a fire and everything?
We have a fire-rated stair that is required by code, and the whole entire building will be protected by a sprinkler system.
Okay.
As is required by code.
Okay, and these will not, there will be no elevators in this particular building, the stairwell?
No, no elevators.
Okay, and my other question would be on the environmental end. How many trees are required, and how many trees are you, are you going to meet those requirements?
We are proposing an onsite tree, and there's an existing street tree, shade tree on the sidewalk that will remain.
How many trees were asked to be put there? Just, just one?
One on the, on the front edge on the sidewalk for a shade tree and one onsite tree.
Okay, so would you be doing both trees or just one?
Yes. Well, we'll be planting one tree, and we'll be keeping the existing tree that's already there on the sidewalk.
Okay, would there be a backyard or anything on this? I'm sorry if I'm?
There is a backyard, yes.
And there will be no trees back there or anything?
Not in the backyard. Our trees are, our tree is going to be in the front yard.
Okay, so why wouldn't there be trees in the back, one or two trees in the back, or some type of greenery, or, you know, for environmental purposes?
We're showing the greenery in the, in the front, because we have a larger setback in the front than we do in the rear.
Okay, so that means that there will be no type of trees. Could we get a tree back there? I mean,
Yes, but I believe it's required because we're meeting the requirement of one tree, onsite tree.
So all the, so there's only one one tree required for that particular area?
Correct.
And not three?
We do one tree. One onsite tree and one shade tree on the side.
Right, okay. Alrighty, because I thought that there would be three trees on that property.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Secretary, any other persons wishing to speak?
Seeing none at this time.
In that case, I need a motion.
Just a move.
Move by Commissioner.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott Roundtree. We'll call Madam Secretary.
Commissioner Byers?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons? I will come back. Commissioner Disova?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons? Commissioner Timmons, do you have a vote? Okay, I'll try to come back again. Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons, if you could just raise, do a thumb raise. We'll take a thumbs up, thumbs down.
Commissioner Timmons? Go to the next person.
Okay, Chair Richard? I'm, oh, I'm sorry, Chair Richard. Can you repeat your vote, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Chair Richardson?
Yes. Application has been approved. Good luck.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Move to application number three, CPB twenty five dash twelve, eight twenty seven dash eight twenty nine South Eighteenth Street, Ms. Corillo Perez.
I have Ms. Christina representing her. She should be joining us.
Okay.
Good evening. Hi.
Good evening.
Good evening. So my name is Christina Diaz Alcero of Conofoli on behalf of Jewelstone Development LLC, the owner of the property located at eight twenty seven, eight twenty nine South Eighteenth Street. Tonight, we are making a request for an adjournment on the pending application to the scheduled meeting on June ninth, twenty twenty five. With the board's consent, we request to preserve notice and extend the statutory period.
Madam Secretary, is June ninth even available?
Yes, it's available for this application.
Okay. All right, duly noted.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Your night. Let's move to CPB twenty four dash one oh three, seventy three dash seventy five South Thirteenth Street, Mr. Cipio.
There we go.
Good evening, Board Secretary and members of the board. I'm Daryl Cipio of Cipio LLC, here on behalf of application CPB dash twenty four dash one oh three. The applicant is McKinley Ventures. The premises is seventy three dash seventy five South Thirteenth Street. We seek an adjournment of this application to June ninth, if if possible.
Yes, duly noted, and your notice will be preserved, and we'll see you in June. Have a good evening.
Have a good evening, Chair and Board. Thank you.
Let's move to CPB twenty four dash ten, which is two thirty Walnut Street, Mr. Murphy.
And maybe Ms. LaMelo.
Good evening, everyone.
David.
Just making sure I have my team, my whole team on. Let's see, Mr. Mitchell, Mr. McDonough. Just looking for the engineer. Mister, it's Michael Hubzman. I don't know, Chris, if you're able to see him. Oh, here he is. Thank you, everyone. Lisa LaMelo of Murphy Show and Wilkes on behalf of the applicant. Application is for the property located at two thirty Walnut Street. Actually, a conversion of an existing three family structure. Legally is a three family structure, and taxes a three family structure. It has, you know, separate utility connections of the three family, but has been used as a two family most recently. So we're here to sort of restore that three family characteristic of the building. All of the variances or all the nonconforming you know, and non, there's some existing nonconformities, but there actually are no variances associated with the project. And we're going to start tonight. We have our engineer, we have Mr. McDonough, but we're going to start with Mr. Mitchell, who's our architect, because most of the changes are architectural in nature.
So we're going to start with Mr. Mitchell? Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give should be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation and whether your license is current and in good standing.
My name is Kirk Mitchell, principal and founder of AKT Designs to North Dean Street, Englewood, New Jersey, and my license is current and in good standing.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Could you show and present to the board the current conditions and the proposed conditions for the property?
Absolutely will. Good evening, Board. This should be a pretty short run through. It's a very minor alternate to what the existing conditions are. So essentially, as our attorney Lisa explained, this is a three unit house that has been, I don't know if it's recorded as a two unit, and it's been lived in as a two family, but the the floors are still chopped up as three units. And the owner was looking to do minor interior adjustments in order to legalize the three family status. There are four floors. There's three floors above grade and one basement level. On the screen right now is the basement level, which we don't plan on touching, so there's no proposed work on this floor. The next floor up is the first floor plan. And as you see, the entrance is off Walnut Street, and the only adjustment that we'd be making to this plan is to remove one of the apartment entry doors near the building entry door, and that way only allowing one entry door into unit one, so that the stair would go up to units two and three. That's the only adjustment on this floor, and this unit is one thousand and twenty two square feet, two bedrooms, one bath. On the second floor, as that person comes up from the stair, the only modifications that we'd be looking to make is to remove a small toilet room or water closet, close off the hallway so that becomes secure for the tenant going up to the third floor, and then creating in the space where there was a water closet, a second bedroom so that this unit would also become a two bedroom, one bathroom, and the square footage of this unit become one thousand one hundred and twenty two square feet. No other changes to this floor would be made. Finally, the third floor, which as you see on the top, is pretty much already laid out as an apartment. We would be looking to just make some minor changes and turn the living area into a bedroom, and then the small bedroom, which isn't legal in size, into a storage or walk-in closet, and then just remove a partition wall to create the living and kitchen space. This square footage of the third apartment would be five hundred and eighty seven square feet, and that is the only interior alterations that we plan on making, and there were no exterior adjustments proposed.
Mr. Mitchell, I know we said there's no exterior adjustments, but I just want to sort of be clear for the board. The facade will remain, and the placement of all the windows will change, will remain?
That's correct.
And one of the conditions in the planner's report, which we acknowledge and receive, is that we'll calculate the side and rear facade transparency percentages in terms of the side yards. Obviously, we're not making any changes, but is there a reason why we know additional windows could be added?
We're less than five feet from the property line.
And then in terms of the front stairs or the front porch area, that is existing and will remain as well, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. I have no further questions for Mr. Mitchell on direct, but we'll defer to the board.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? From Mr. Mitchell? Here we go. Ms. Juma?
Nana Juma, zoning officer speaking. I want to correct the record. The attorney for this application mentioned that the legal use of the property is a three family. I wrote in my determination to the applicant and board that exactly what the city has on record as for this property, which is a two family, and the change or increase in number of the units is what in, is what triggered those existing, what she's calling variances, and also triggered the need for site plan approval.
Thank you, Ms. Juma. I I agree. We were pointing out that it was, it was, it has been taxed and continues to be taxed as a three family, and there's three utility hookups, so we believe at some point it was a three family, but I do agree. It is currently a two family, which is why we're here today.
Right, being used as a three, but legally a two. But I do have a question for the architect, Mr. Chair.
Okay, but let's let's do this so we're all in accordance. Let's get you sworn in.
Sure.
Mr. Back, where are you, sir?
Yes, do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give to the board should be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation for the record.
Nana Juma, zoning officer.
Thank you.
My question for the architect is, can you mention the total square foot area for the third level apartment versus the second?
Yes. Because of the configuration of the building, the third floor is essentially half the footprint of the floor below, so it is five hundred and eighty seven square feet, and the floor below is one thousand one hundred and twenty two square feet.
Thank you. Do you have elevations?
We don't have any elevations because we weren't proposing any changes. However, here are pictures of the front and rear facades.
This is really small, but I look like I have like a peak area.
Is that better?
So what better? Thank you. And my last question for the architect. The basement, does it have a separate entrance into that unit or space rather?
It has a back stairwell that you can see on the picture on the right hand side into that basement.
A stairwell that leads to a door?
Yes, a stairwell that leads to a door. So there is a, like an egress exit out of the basement directly to the backyard.
Is there any access or connection between this basement area and the other apartments?
The, let me just bring this up. At the time, no, the 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 access stair at some point was taken out and closed. So the only access into the basement is through the rear yard.
So that's an independent space?
Excuse me?
It's independent of the units above. Thank you.
And let me ask a follow up question. So the third floor is five hundred square feet? So what is that going to be, a studio apartment?
It's pretty much going to be used as a studio, but we have it as a one bedroom.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, any questions or comments? From Mr. Mitchell? Here we go, next witness.
My next witness is our sibling engineer, Mr. Michael Hubzman.
Good evening, Mr. Hudson. Do you solemnly swear the testimony you're about to give to the board should be truthful?
Yes, I do, of course, yes.
Thank you. Please state your name and affiliation to this application and whether your license is current and in good standing.
Sure, Michael, excuse me, Michael Hubzman, a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My office address is two sixty three South Washington Avenue in Bergenfield, and my license is is current and in good standing, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hubzman. Can you review with the board the existing conditions of the site? And I wanted to review also the review letter that was dated March twentieth, twenty twenty five.
Sure, let's see. We prepared a site plan. As Kirk had mentioned, there's not a lot of work really being done outside the existing conditions here. Little little bit. Okay, my existing conditions, interesting three story dwelling. As Kirk had testified, there's the the basement stairs in the rear. We front on Walnut Street. There's the encroaching stair that was, that's existing. Every house on that side of Walnut Street seems to have the similar condition. That was brought up in, in I think planners or the engineers' letter with that encroaching stair. There are no posed changes to the footprint itself. There's an existing concrete walk around the rear. There was a question, and I believe it was the planners or engineers' letter, the encroaching wall in the rear, that's like some an older wall. We're proposing to, we're going to be removing that wall and installing a fence that should alleviate the questions about the wall. In the front of the lot, it was also in, I believe, one of the review letters about planting a shade tree in the front, and which we will agree to. We'll we'll work with the arborist. The only problem with that is that there are overhead wires there, so we'll we'll work with the arborist if if there's a lower tree that would work in the front. And we were also going to propose and update our plan to remove more of the concrete in the rear and possibly plant a glue of the front tree, plant a tree in the rear.
And Mr. Hubzman, I just want to, just so the the board's aware, we are responding to the the planner's report, which, you know, indicates there's an existing coverage, you know, high amount, about ninety percent of the impervious coverage. And so in response to that, we're And so in response to that, we're uh proposing to remove some of the um, the cover, some of the cement in the rear of the yard. Uh, and, and plant some grass as well as uh plant a tree uh in, in the rear.
Right, well, we'll plant some, we'll remove some of this concrete, it's in, it's in fairly poor shape. Uh, plant some grass for a little, little amenity space uh in, in the rear of the property, yes.
And um, in terms of the street tree in, in the front, um, applicant will work with the arborist on that, uh, there is. A fairly narrow sidewalk, I think, in, in that area, I'm not sure if you have.
Right, well, there's ten foot uh from curb to the building, and we were proposing a three-by-three um. Three well, there are a couple trees on the block, uh, there are none on, on our side of the street, there are a few on the other side. I think two trees on, on the um across the street. Uh, right, they were talking about making sure you have five foot clear uh on the sidewalk, and it's, it's tight, you know, it's tight. Uh, with a three-foot tree and uh then the stair is there, so we'll, we'll work with the arborist on, on the best uh plan for that tree.
Okay, um, and I'm sorry, sir, go ahead.
Uh, what else, yeah, right, the engineer's letter had a lot of comments about, you know, utilities, and we had a water. And sewer letter, and we, of course, have to work with the utility, I, I don't wanna really. Take a lot of time talking about the, the utilities, but there are existing utilities in the street. Uh, and, and the lighting, we, we, our plan just shows the existing lighting, and they had requested some newer lighting. But there are just existing spotlights on the property now, so we showed the three lights. Uh, in the front side and, and rear, but we'll, we'll, uh, I guess, working with Kirk, uh. You know, we'll show some big mounted lights that are a little, uh, a little more modern.
And, and, and the applicant will comply with uh the lighting requirements um at the property line.
Right, the point five foot candles, yes, yes.
Uh, and then in terms of uh some, the stormwater management comments in the engineering report. Uh, there are no changes uh in response to questions in the report, there's no changes to the existing. Uh, system, either the roof strains um. Or the sort of leaders that, that go out uh from the, from the structure, correct?
Right, and we'll, we'll be improving that somewhat by removing some paving in the rear and. And the one roof drain comes out to the front, uh, you know, there are some questions on inspecting it, which, which, told to the owner about uh. You know, doing some television, inspecting on some of these older pipes.
And I, I believe, uh, those are all the, well, the, the one um issue I wanted to address in the. Um, engineering letter, which is uh, you know, related to a variance, not necessarily to engineering, but because we're discussing the letter. Um, there's an indication that a parking study um would be needed because there's a parking variance, there's actually no parking variance associated with this. Project, uh, because it is under twenty-five hundred square feet, and uh Walnut is a collector road, so that is, uh, exempts the. Uh, structure from the uh parking requirements uh under the ordinance. I believe Mr. Mr. Barry um indicated a section in his report as well.
Right, we, we were not kind of going to buy the parking study, right, because there was no parking variance.
Yeah, um. Those, um, those are all the questions that, that I have uh for direct, and I will uh defer to the board.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Mr. Traficant, you're still on the oath, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Hubsman?
Uh, Hubsman, yes.
I said that right?
That's close.
Just for the record, clarify. Hmm. You're in receipt of the Department of Engineers' report to the planning board dated March twentieth, two thousand twenty-five, is that correct?
Uh, yes, I am, yes, I have it right in front of me, yes.
Go to page three, under item three, survey, there are three items. On page three, Roman numeral sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. Roman numeral sixteen says, ask for testimony to the board indicating what easements exist within the public right-of-way to allow the existing dwelling. Cover front porch and the front stairs to approach into the Walnut Street right-of-way.
Right, there are none, uh, I mean, there was no, that we're aware.
So we, yeah, um, and we will work with um the city on addressing that either through a, a. License agreement or um an easement, usually the law department prefers license agreements. For those stairwells, but they are existing, and as to the remaining um encroachments that are listed. Uh, in the letter for that wall, that wall is gonna be removed, uh, and a fence um. Uh, placed instead, so that'll, uh, that'll take care of those uh encroachments as well.
Well, on that point, you are, your plan is gonna make provisions to indemnify the city in Newark many current or future litigation. Should anyone slip or fall down those existing stairs or fall off the elevated porch?
A- a- absolutely, those are typically the terms in that agreement, but we will reach out to the law department um. And have on record now that, that we would indemnify the city.
Lastly, for the record, a parking study is not required because the site's exempt from a parking variance due to the fact that. It's what, less than twenty-five hundred square feet and fronts exclusively on a major arterial collector roadway?
Yes.
Okay, so that's not applicable. Otherwise, Mr. Hubsman, can you comply with all the other comments in the engineer's report to the board dated March?
Twentieth, twentieth, uh, yes, yes, I'll, I'll work with your office and we'll, we'll fit a revised plan.
Including the placement of the city shade tree, not just with the arborist, but with our office as well.
Sure, yeah, we were thinking of, of even putting one in the rear now, if, if, when we remove some of that concrete back there.
All right, well, again, the intent is to put something in the pulp right-of-way, but it's a narrow lot, your encroaching stairs do not help. And bold not to put tree pits on top of existing utilities, so. That really narrows the field, doesn't it?
Yeah, it's, it's narrow up there, a lot of pipes.
All right, all right, just as long as, as it's agreeable, all right, that we include us in any means with the city arborist.
Absolutely.
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Traficant. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Okay, here we now, next witness.
Okay, um, our next witness, uh, and final witness is Mr. McDonough.
Good evening, Mr. McDonough, do you solemnly swear the testimony about to give this board should be truthful?
I do, Mr. Beck.
Thank you, please state your name, affiliation, and whether in fact your license is current and under good standing.
Yes, I'm John McDonough, my license in planning is current and in good standing. And my business address is one oh one Gibraltar Drive, Parsippany, New Jersey.
Please continue.
Okay, uh, Mr. McDonough, can you uh go through the planning proofs for the board, please?
Sure, I think this is an opportunity to bring all the records pertaining to this particular piece of property together. Um, you heard Ms. Juma say at the outset that the city records um in the building and zoning department do not reflect this as a, as a three-family. Um, but interestingly, the tax records on the city side um do reflect this as a three-family. I know that in and of itself does not mean that this is a lawful three-family. Um, I would also point out that I checked the state records, the NJDCA certificates of registration. Uh, we know DCA are the stewards or the authority of multiple dwelling units here in the state of New Jersey. And this site is in fact registered with DCA and has a valid registration as well. Um, record zero seven, one four, zero seven, six, six, eight, seven, I can certainly provide that to. Uh, Carissa as, as part of the record. Um, but again, this will sort of bring all of the records together for this particular piece of property. Uh, just to show from a practical side what this site looks like. Um, again, for the record, Lisa, should I mark this a one to the stage exhibit?
So you wanna, um, the one photo, or we're gonna mark?
Three photos and one exhibit, so we'll call it with three parts, and I put little numbers on the bottom there, so sheet number one. Under A one just shows sort of the left side of the building and the front of the building, it's this, it's this red top building. Um, that Dirk just spoke about, basically what you see is what you'll get, uh, we've got the notices in the front. And interestingly, we're looking at three-family here, if you look closely on the building to the left, you can see three mailboxes as well. It's a neighborhood that contains a mix of threes and twos, so the applicant is not doing anything that's atypical of the neighborhood. In fact, we have a larger building here, more spatial capacity than the, the three-family that's, that's right next door. Uh, this just gives you a view on sheet number two of A one, a view of what you would see on the right-hand side and the front as well. And then finally, um, our architect provided a picture of three meters there, so from a, a practical standpoint. This site has been set up as a three-family for some time, and the applicant is just looking to validate or, or legalize that. In accordance with those DCA records and in accordance with the city tax records as well. Um, in terms of the justification for the relief, again, this is going to provide for needed housing in the city in an efficient manner. It's uh an effective fit-up of that which is already there and which has been set up that way. Uh, again, this is really a validation application to bring the records um together. Uh, I would also offer that this is going to provide and promote a desirable visual environment. Keeping a building that's there familiar in the local landscape, not breaking up the, the pattern or any of the. Construction nuisances that would go with, with new construction, so adaptive reuse, fit up of what is already there. Goes towards those planning goals for aesthetics and for efficient use of land. Uh, on the negative side, this is a, a clean application, variance-free, but for some existing non-conforming conditions. Which are, are not worsening, um, you've heard that there's no parking relief here, we have the exemptions for um being in the C-two zone. Being on a lot that's less than twenty-five hundred square feet, and also um the third criteria there, being on a collector road as well. So I believe that this is a nice fit with the neighborhood and relief can be granted without any substantially adverse impacts to the public. To the zone plan, on the balancing, the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments, and therefore approval is warranted. Lisa, that's all I have on direct.
Thank, thank you, uh, Mr. McDonough, um, any members of the board have any questions?
Commissioners, any questions or comments for Mr. McDonough? Here we now, does that complete your presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Madam Secretary, are any persons in the, from the public wishing to speak?
Apologies, seeing none at this time, Chair.
In that case, I need a motion.
Motion to approve this application.
Moved by Co-Chair Witcher.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Scott Roundtree, roll call motion.
Commissioner De Silva?
Yes.
Commissioner Bayes?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree?
Yes, I vote yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Co-Chair Witcher?
Yes.
Chair Richardson?
Yes, application will approve, good luck.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Good, thank you very much.
Let's move to CPB twenty-four dash seventy-seven, which is one forty-six dash one fifty Sunset Avenue. Miss Moore?
Good evening, Chair, members of the board, I'm just doing a quick scan before I introduce myself, um. Madam Secretary, can you bring in Joseph Javier, if he's not already in?
Yes, I'm trying, he keeps declining.
And also William Stummel.
Okay, is Mr. Sadar with you as well?
Yes, correct, that's the developer. So for the record, uh, good evening, uh, my name is Marsha Moore from the law firm of Post Pollock, on behalf of the applicant Shamir Properties LLC. Uh, this property is located in the R-two and comprised of two lots, it's lots fifty-two and forty-three. Along block forty, sixty-nine, and commonly known as one forty-six, one fifty Sunset Avenue. Tonight, we are seeking an application to adjust the two lot lines and construct uh new three-family on each lot. You'll hear tonight that each lot will have the requisite lot size of twenty-five hundred square feet. However, we are seeking C variances um that our planner and our architect will be discussing um in detail during our presentation. This application does include a minor subdivision, as well as I mentioned preliminary and final site plan. Originally, our application contemplated eight variances. However, after review with our team and also the professional reports, more so the planner's report, we are seeking to cut that in half. And you'll hear that we are eliminating the variances for insufficient onsite trees. The fence height, fence material, and the illumination, we will agree to comply. And one of the fences that encroaches in the public right-of-way will be removed. Um, just some housekeeping before I begin, I am receipt of a number of reports. I am in receipt of a conditional approver from your city surveyor regarding the minor subdivision. Mr. Fox has asked us to change the lot numbers that was assigned on our plans. Rather than fifty-two and fifty-three, we are seeking to identify those as proposed fifty-two point oh one and fifty-two point oh two. And we can comply as a condition of approval, and we'll provide those revised plans if the board approves this application. Second, I am receipt of the engineer memorandum, that memorandum's dated September twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-five. We have no objection to the report, uh, within that report is a traffic and parking assessment letter. That our traffic engineer will be addressing. As part of our application, we did provide a traffic, a parking study, because we are seeking relief for parking variance. However, it's our belief that the request is a little expansive, and so our traffic engineer will be addressing that. And last but not least, not last actually, I'm also receipt of the planner's staff report dated, dated April thirtieth. As noted, we have a limit for those variances. Mr. Barry's asked us to elicit certain testimony that we will be agreeing to provide during the course of our testimony. I did not receive any water and sewer comments, but I can make the representation that there was an email circulated to the applicant. Um, asking for certain documents as a condition of approval, and we would be willing to provide those documentation. Notice was provided in the star ledger, notice provided a sign, and we have provided notice to the property owners in accordance to the municipal land use law. So I would like to call my first witness, my first witness will be our architect, Joseph Javier. We'll discuss the minor subdivision, as well as proposed architectural design of this application.
Thank you, Mr. Javier, are you solemnly swear the testimony about to give this board should be truthful?
I do.
Thank you, please state your name, affiliation to the record.
My name is uh Joseph Javier, I'm a licensed, a New Jersey licensed architect, in good standing and current. Um, and um, I reside in twenty-six North Oak uh Avenue, Isla, New Jersey.
And Ms. Javier, can you just start briefly, because you may be near to the board, just your um, your affiliation, your employment?
I am a retired architect, I used to work for the city of Jersey City as their architect, I am now retired, but working uh part-time as an architect.
And you've been admitted as a licensed architect in various municipalities?
Uh, yes, I have testified in other municipalities and as well as working for a municipality during my career.
Chair. You're accepted by the board, please continue.
All right, so Ms. Javier, if you could share your screen, I, I mentioned initially that this application um seeks minor subdivision. Before we discuss the proposed two-family, if you can just walk us through the minor subdivision and focus on the square footage and the um. Square footage and the lot width of the proposed subdivision.
Okay, can everybody see my, the screen? Shared screen?
Not yet.
Yeah.
Thanks. You can say it, Ms. Javier, you can come in.
Okay. I believe the, the two lots right now is uh combined as one, so the city has it as one lot. What we're doing is we're taking, we would like to subdivide it so that the two lots are almost equal in size, about twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh, on the left side, it'll, the, we're proposing a three-family. Uh, on the left side, we're proposing a three-family um, structure, two three-family structure. On the left side, it will, uh, it'll be built directly on the property line. And then between the two lots that we're trying to create, there'll be a six-foot space gap between the two, three feet from the property line. And then on the other side will also be zero lot. And then the rear setback is approximately about 25 and a half feet. And on the front, we are trying to conform with the adjacent properties, so we have 1.88 feet for the front setback. And it'll be slab one grade construction, three floors total.
Right, just want to just clarify the record. So we do have two existing lots, lots 52 and 53, and we're going to adjust those lot lines to create the two three-families, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Um, I do know, and just for the record, that originally we were keeping the existing lot numbers as 52 and 53. Those will be modified, proposed 52.01 and 50.02, is that correct?
That is correct. And we'll update our drawings to reflect the.
And if you can just confirm again, the lot areas of each two-family will meet the required lot size of 2,500 square feet?
Yes, a little over, maybe like four or five feet over. So we'll be complying with the minimum lot size of 2,500 square feet.
We do have some other ancillary variances that we would discuss. And as far as the rear yard setback, we are seeking relief for the rear yard setback. Can you just discuss what would be in that rear yard?
They're all going to be, um, we're going to have, it's all going to be grass covered, but we'll have the condenser units at the back. And then also below, below the ground will be seabed tanks for stormwater management. And that's all that's going to be in the back.
Okay. Um, Mr. Javier, could you just, for the purpose of the record, just state the date of the subdivision plans into the record, please? The date of the plans?
Uh, this is the first revision. It's dated October 24, 2024.
And the most revision, the first revision, October 24, 24, you said? Okay.
Yes. And prior to that, it was the other schemes, uh, proposals that we had submitted, which were rejected. And now this is basically the third design that we're working on for this, uh, for this site.
Okay. I just want to know, before we talk to the architectural features, within that rear yard, one of the comments of the planner respect whether or not we can provide any onsite trees. After evaluating the project, the applicant is willing to provide the requisite onsite trees, is that correct?
That's correct. We needed at least two more trees, so we're looking to put.
So as a result, we're no longer seeking relief for the onsite trees?
That's correct.
Okay. And while we're on that fence and there were a couple of comments, I just want to address those comments. We were seeking relief respect to the fence height at the property. We were proposing a four-foot fence and we're, the requirement is three feet and the applicant's agreed to comply with that, is that correct?
That's correct. Originally, there was a existing fence there that we wanted to keep, and that existing fence was four feet high. So now we're willing to replace it and move it back within the right-of-way, uh, you know, the setback 1.88 feet and keep the height of three feet high.
And more so, there was also an existing chain link fence that was commented that chain link fences are not permitted in the zone. And so the applicant is agree to comply and remove that chain link fence? Can you just discuss that?
That's correct. We'll remove the existing chain link fence and replace it with a six-foot high vinyl fence or whatever material that the client will decide to put in there.
And before I again discuss the architectural details, there was some illumination. We were seeking a variance for exceeding the maximum illumination in the walkways. We were exceeding the three-foot foot candles, the applicant's agree to comply, is that correct?
That's correct.
Right, if you can walk us through the next, um, the architectural feature. As I mentioned, you said there's been a number of reiteration of this project that we're seeking. And just walk us through the architectural features of the project.
Okay, I'm going to change the. Uh, exterior or floor plans for us, Marsha?
I would say let's discuss the interior of the property first. Kind of walk us through the unit sizes of each floor and then we could talk about the rendering and the exterior.
Okay. Can everybody see my, the screen?
Zoom in a little bit so I can see, zoom in a little bit. So we could, okay.
Is that better?
I'll let the board, to me it's not, but if you can, so we can see the numbers a little bit. Perhaps it's my eyes. Okay. All right, that looks, that looks much better too.
I was just trying to fit the entire plan into the.
Okay.
I can zoom closer and just move up. That better? Okay, so basically, the, the ground floor, once you enter to the front, it's a level with the sidewalk. Um, you enter into a combined kitchen, living and dining room area. And the total area is approximately 17,000, uh, not 1,700 uh, and 75 square feet, approximately that. It's all, it's all the same for the rest. Um, but for that first room, it's about 13, it's on there, 13, 1334 square feet. Um, so once you, then you're going to continue towards the back in the hallway. You'll have a pantry area. Uh, first bedroom number three is on the right side. You have a closet for coats. And then on the left side is the laundry room with the hot water. Uh, in a minute. And then as you continue down towards the back of the house, uh, you get the bathroom, the first bathroom, shared bathroom. And it's also, we made it, we designed it so that later on, if someone with a handicap, uh, uh, you know, someone who's a handicap will be able, will they be able to, um, outfit it with the grab bars and then make it ADA compliant. In fact, the size of the bathroom is ADA compliant. It's just all you would have to do is add the grab bars and other elements to make it fully compliant. And then moving towards the back, you go to bedroom number one. And then on the right side is the bedroom number two with the, which is the master bedroom with the bathroom suite. So all in all, that whole ground floor is about 1,775 square feet. And then to get to the upper floors, you would go up, uh, again on the front, there's a separate set of stairs there that go up to a covered porch. And then upon entering the foyer, there's a shared, basically shared stairwell between the two units upstairs. Uh, you have the mailboxes on the left side, and then you go up the stairs on the right. And you go to the second unit, which has again almost a similar layout like in the ground floor, but it's slightly larger because we have, you know, we have additional space there, but not by much, maybe about 10 more square feet. The layout is about the same. You have the kitchen, dining and living room area. You have the bedroom, the laundry room, shared bathroom, which again is adaptable to become ADA compliant. The bedroom number one in the back, and then the master en suite on the right side. And like I said, the third floor is exactly duplication of this second floor. And then on the other side, it's almost the same. It's just a mirror image of the structure on the left side. Should I continue or?
Yes, you can continue, thank you.
For the second unit or?
If they're a mirror image, no, no.
They're a mirror image. It's just flipped the other way around. And I forgot to mention on the ground floor, we do have an area here for rep use for garbage. And then we've made it so that all the utility rooms are here and they can be locked up on either side of the, of the structure. And access to the backyard is only through this alleyway. Because we try to make sure we have enough, we don't take away any more space than needed from, uh, you know, usable space on the structure. So to get to the backyard, you would go through this alleyway here, which is six feet wide total.
And both tenants, both units would have access to the rear yard?
Yes. They're, they're both three feet away from the property line. So if the owners would eventually put a fence, they would still have their own access to the backyard.
Um, if you can then walk us through, I know we've had an opportunity to review the rendering. If you can just show the exterior of the building and the type of materials. Um, and Madam Secretary, I, Sabat, I'd like to have that marked as A1, which is the proposed rendering. I'm sure if you want to throw the elevations first? Okay.
This is the front elevation rendering. Um, yeah, the, the first unit is on the left side. The structure is on the right side there. Um, mostly vinyl siding and stone veneer at the base and some stone veneer on the front entrance and, and a portion here to give it a little more interest. And you have three, uh, the front elevation is also setback and, and three planes so to give it a little more interest. And that's duplicated on the other structure, but flipped around so that it looks, they complement each other at the same time. Uh, it's very different.
One of the comments was whether or not the applicant is able to meet the facade transparency. Have you had the opportunity to evaluate that? And do we, do, do we meet those transparency calculations or requirement?
Uh, we will comply. We are looking to increase the window in the bottom floor and increase the window along the stairwell. Right now, we're slightly under, but we will make it, we will increase the window so that we meet the 30% uh, compliance transparency.
Okay. Um, and last but not least, I made reference previously that respect to the engineer memorandum dated April 29th, that we can, we will agree to comply with those conditions of approval. This the engineer memorandum?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I know Mr. Tropicanti, I'm sure he raised his hand regarding certain, we've already testified that the fence will be removed. There was a comment whether or not the existing paved drive that extends over the common property line, or then out we have any easement with the city. I did not see any in the title. Again, the applicant would discuss that with the city representative, perhaps with a license agreement, and have the standard language as noted, the indemnification language that is required. Does that conclude your presentation, Mr. Javier? Do you have anything else to add?
Unless anyone has questions, this concludes my testimony.
Commissioners, any questions or comments?
Do you have a question?
Co-Chair Witcher.
Thank you. Mr. Javier, with regards to the second unit, the mirror image?
Yes.
I'm wondering, and you can tell me, will the residents of the second home that's oriented differently, that's slightly slanted, you know, from the rendering point of view, will they perceive the unique orientation of their homes or not?
Uh, yes, because it is kind of shaped based on the way the lot is right now. So if you look at the floor plans of the room, there are slight angles because of the, uh, the way the lot is. Was that, was that the question you were asking?
Yeah, I'm just wondering when they're in the rooms, will it look for them from the inside? Will it look odd to them or no?
No, I, I mean, it'll look very, for them, there'll be some slight angles, but it's, it's usable space.
All right, thank you.
I want to recognize Commissioner Jordan. Good evening, Commissioner. Mr. Tropicanti, you're still in the office.
Yeah, um, do I need to be sworn in again?
Why?
Okay.
No, Mr. Tropicanti, once is enough.
All right, all right, well, it's a different application, that's the reason why I ask. Okay. And the engineers report to the board dated April 29th. On page two, item three, survey, room number three. Survey indicates an existing paved drive that extends over the common property line between subject lot 53 and adjoining lot 55 located to the north-northwest by as much as nine feet by scale. Offering property owner shall provide testimony to the board as to what approvals easements exist within subject lot 53 for the benefit of the adjoining property owner of lot 55 to allow this paved driveway to remain wearing as it is shown on the survey. Should no approvals easements exist within subject lot 53 for this existing paved drive? Offering property owner of the subject lot shall provide additional testimony to the board as to the future disposition of this existing paved drive within subject lot 53, should the board approve this application. Mr. Javier, can you answer that?
I don't know if we'll be able to maintain, like, for example, the driveway because we're building directly onto the property line. So I don't know if we'll be able to get that easement on.
Is there any? Does anyone know if there is an easement?
There is, there is no easement. Again, I think believe that's a title issue when the clients took title, that there's a survey endorsement that would address that. So we do rely on that with our, with our title. That's an endorsement that would be reflected in any survey endorsement when the clients took, um, title to the property.
So as far as you know, there's no, no approvals or easements connected with the adjoining lot, bad drive?
Not to our knowledge. Again, that would, my experience, I also do real estate, that would be subject to any survey endorsement.
All right. That being said, I guess the future disposition, is that to be removed then? I would think, right? If you're building up to that property line, that existing paved driveway would have to come out, right?
Correct.
And does the neighbor know that?
Mr. Javier, that is correct.
Yeah, and does the neighbor next door know that before you start tearing down his driveway?
The neighbor next door was notified of a notice. I don't know who's here tonight, but we did provide the requisite notice with the plans and also posted a sign right in front of the, the property. So any potential notice, the neighbor would be advised of. But certainly, my client's intention is to be a good neighbor, so we can certainly have that conversation again with the neighbor.
All right, as long as for the, on the record, your client's willing to talk to the neighbor about their driveway. All right. Otherwise, you can address all the other comments in the engineers report the board dated April 29th, 2025?
Yes, except for our traffic engineer. Mr. Tropicanti will be referencing your traffic assessment report. That's incorporated in your engineering report. That's item number two. That will be your next witness.
All right. No further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions or comments for the architect? Hearing now, next one.
Um, this time I'd like to bring our planner and traffic engineer, William Stimmel.
Well, let's get one in, Mr. Beck.
Good evening, sir. Do you sell me swear the testimony about to give, she'll be truthful?
I do.
Thank you, please state your name, your affiliation to this application, whether your license is current and in good standing.
My name is William Stimmel, S-T-I-M-M-E-L. My professional address is PO Box 280, Rutherford, New Jersey. I've been retained with regards to this application as a, a traffic engineer and a planner. I'm a licensed engineer. My license, uh, in the state of New Jersey, my license is current. I'm a licensed planner as well in the state of New Jersey, and that license is also current.
You're accepted by the board, please continue.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Stimmel, um, you've indicated that tonight you are testifying both the capacity of a licensed planner as well as a traffic engineer. Before we get into the planning testimony, you had an opportunity to prepare a parking study in connection with this application, more so respecting the variance that we're speaking, seeking, the three spaces. If you can just describe your parking study and then you can get into. If you can just describe your parking study and then you can get into the planning testimony.
Sure, I submitted parking study on January twenty first of two thousand twenty five. Not going to rehash all the background information on the project, but as the applicant's attorney had just said. We are requesting a variance for uh three parking spaces for the combined development, the two, three family dwellings. Uh the city of Newark has a requirement that the application provide an analysis of the number of available on-street parking spaces. When you have a application where a parking variance is requested. Uh typically, that study covers two weekdays from seven AM until eleven AM and from six PM until eleven PM. And also uh various times of day during the day on Saturdays and Sundays. It also looks at the frequency of the rate at which those spaces turn over. Uh you know, given the limited scope of the project, again, it it it's a total of six units, we're required to provide a total of three parking spaces. Uh we tried to reduce the scope of the the study while still providing the board with sufficient information to make their determination. So we looked at one weekday for the required hours and just took it as a straight parking count. Rather than a uh parking turnover count. Uh we didn't look at the Saturday and Sunday because the demand for residential parking peaks overnight and that's pretty. Stable Monday through Friday and also Saturday and Sunday. Uh we didn't look at the parking turnover because residential parking people generally. Occupy the spaces for a long period of time. Uh it's a very uh infrequent turnover rate. It's not uh it's not a convenience store, a gas station, or a fast food or anything like that. Um so with that said, we uh did study the parking demand in the study area. The results of our analysis are appended to the report in tabular format. Uh if you flip to the back of the report, you can see that the parking study was submitted January third, uh performed January third of two thousand twenty five. Uh there are zones A through K noted across the top of the page. And it shows the available parking spaces throughout that study area. There's a total of two hundred thirty-one parking spaces available in the study area at the uh. At the busiest time of the morning, there were still seventy-nine parking spaces available, as you might expect, that's earlier in the morning study. Uh and at the busiest time of the evening study, there were still forty-five parking spaces available, and that's around ten PM. Now, the way the uh requirement is written, it says that the on-street parking spaces on each block face within three hundred feet. Uh the project site shall be included in the study. So I took that to mean the full length of the block face on Sunset Avenue from. Uh from Linsley Avenue all the way up to South Orange, which is pretty far, it's about fifteen hundred uh feet past our site. If you if you reduce the scope of the study and just look at the portion of Sunset Avenue between uh Eighteenth Avenue and Abinger Place. And the portion of Linsley, which is the cross street to the south of us, uh between Alexander Street and Brookside. Uh you still have available. Uh you still have available uh thirty-nine to seventy-six parking spaces in the worst case scenario. Uh that's a that that reduces the distance to be traveled to about six hundred feet. Um so you've got, you've got more than enough parking within proximity to the site. Uh we looked at the mass transit available in the area. The site has access to transit at three different locations within point four miles of the property. Uh those three different locations are served by three different bus routes. Which could take the residents of the dwelling to uh downtown Newark, Jersey City, uh South Orange and. Various other areas in in Essex County and beyond through the extended um transit network. Uh we looked at the census data for the city of Newark and found um a- as with prior reports. That forty percent of households in the city do not have access to a personal vehicle. And thirty-eight percent of households have one vehicle available, so certainly this site would benefit from the uh low availability. Of personal vehicles, benefit from the walkable neighborhoods and the access to transit as well. Uh moving on to the planning testimony. As has been noted, the subject property is located in the R three, one to three family and townhouse zone. It's intended for development with relatively low density housing in the form of one family, two family and three family dwellings. Uh that's in keeping with the development pattern along both sides of Sunset Avenue. Uh once you get north of the commercial, commercial properties on Eighteenth. Uh there's a a handful of one families, uh primarily two and three families in the immediate vicinity of the site. So the proposed development is a permitted use in the zone. And it's also worth noting that both of the proposed lots meet the minimum lot size requirement, which is twenty-five hundred square feet. Uh there are a few variances noted in the board planner's latest review letter, which was dated April thirtieth of two thousand twenty-five. Um referring to lot fifty-two first, uh there was noted a variance for minimum lot width where twenty-five feet is required. Twenty-three point eighty-six feet is proposed. Uh based on my reading of the ordinance, the the lot width requirement is taken at the front setback. Uh so the front yard is uh uh the the front of the property is thirty-four point four feet wide at the street line. If you go one point eight eight feet back from that, it's uh just a shade over thirty-four feet. So I don't believe that a a lot with uh variance is required. We do need a variance for lot coverage where fifty-five percent is permitted, fifty-nine percent building coverage is proposed. Uh that's a relatively minor deviation, which is going to be mitigated by the installation of stormwater improvements. Uh it's worth noting that the building generally meets the setback requirements. Uh the minimum number of parking spaces, one and a half spaces are required. Zero are proposed. Uh there were also variances noted for the minimum number of onsite trees. Maximum fence height in the front yard, fence material and maximum illumination. Those four variances have been eliminated as testified to by the project architect based on. Uh the proposed revisions to the plan. Then lot fifty-three also has some variances associated with it. Again, these are all C variances. Uh there there was a variance noted for minimum lot width, uh twenty-four point five feet was proposed as noted on the plan. Uh that's actually the the width of the lot at the back of the property and the property becomes narrower as you move away from the street. Uh so again, that lot width, uh if you take it at the front setback line is just a shade over thirty-four feet. So it would meet the lot width requirement. Uh there's a variance for the rear setback where twenty-seven point three feet is required, twenty-five point five one feet is proposed. Uh again, it's a minor deviation from the standard and I'd note that the rear face of the building. Although it doesn't line up exactly with the adjoining lots is largely in keeping with the existing buildings on the two adjoining lots. It's about uh two feet further back. The maximum lot coverage for building fifty-five percent permitted, sixty percent proposed. Again, a minor deviation which is mitigated by the installation of stormwater improvements, lot fifty-three as well. Largely complies with the setback requirements. Uh the minimum number of parking spaces, one and a half parking spaces required, zero proposed. And then also lot fifty-three had those four variances for the onsite trees, the fence height, the fence material. And the illumination at walkways, all of which have been eliminated by the revisions to the proposed plans. So in terms of the justification for the requested C variance relief. Uh the applicant can ask for the C one hardship variance or the C two fle- uh flexible C variance. Uh the C one variance is uh applicable in this case to the the variance for lot width. If the board determines that it's necessary, uh the lot width is a function of the shape of the property. Um the lots are both thirty-four point four feet wide at the street line. Uh slightly over thirty-four feet at the one point eight eight front yard setback line. So both of those appear to comply with the width requirement, but as the property becomes narrower, moving to the back, it becomes deficient in terms of the lot width. Uh but even if that's determined to be a variance, that lot with deficiency is going to be hidden from the uh from the public. Right away by the presence of the buildings on the property. Uh the remaining variances would come under the heading of the C two, the flexible C. Where the purposes of zoning would be advanced and the benefits and granting the variance would outweigh any detriments. Um and I think there are three purposes of zoning which are advanced by the application. Uh purpose A to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state. In a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals and general welfare. Uh the applicants proposing to redevelop a site which has been vacant for at least twenty years in a manner which is substantially in keeping. With the requirements of the zone, it's a permitted use, it satisfies the requirement for lot area, satisfies the requirement for building height. Front and side setbacks, impervious coverage, and it's also providing new housing stock in an area where most of the residential units are older. Purpose E, which is to promote the establishment of appropriate populations and densities. Uh the development is in keeping with the use and lot area and density requirements of the zone. And purpose I, which is to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development technique and good civic design and arrangement. I think what you have and always um I I caution the board that aesthetics are somewhat subjective, but you've got an attractive new building. Plenty of windows, it meets the glazing requirements. Uh there's articulation in the facades and it's clearly an upgrade over the vacant lot which exists on the property. As far as the negative criteria, the applicant has to demonstrate that the variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. And where it will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Based on my review of the materials submitted, that review of the subject property, the testimony provided tonight. I see no substantial detriment or substantial impairment. Uh the relief requested, as I have testified to, is relatively minor in nature. Uh the only possible objection I could see coming from the the board members or the public relates to the parking. Uh but again, it's a fairly minor parking variance. We need a variance for three spaces and it's been demonstrated. Uh that there's more than three spaces available in the area. Uh it's also note worth noting that depending on how. Any onsite parking would be arranged, it would result in the loss of one to two street parking spaces. Because of the creation of a new curb cut or curb cuts for the properties. Um it's currently a vacant lot, so almost anything you do with it will be an upgrade. It's permitted use in the zone. Uh there are also proposed upgrades to lighting, landscaping and drainage. So for all those reasons, I believe the board has sufficient justification to grant the requested variance relief.
Thank you, Chair. I have no further questions of Mister Stimmel.
Commissioners, questions or comments? Here we go, next witness.
I have no further witness. I don't know if Mister Barry wants to opine on that lot with, however, to the extent that we do need it, we would be asking for it.
Mister Barry?
Yes, Chair, uh John Barry is still under oath. I mean, I I I agree with the testimony in in effect that um if a variance is required. It is de minimis and doesn't have an impact on the streetscape of the neighborhood. Just trying to pull up and see if we have any better guidance in the ordinance. Give me just a quick moment. Well, I would agree with you, with the ordinance as written, um measures the lot width at the front building setback line. So based on the the design and consistent with Mister Stimmel's testimony, the lot width variance is not required for these. So even though the lots taper as you get further back, um the ordinance calls for the lot width to be measured at the front setback. So that variance is not required.
Thanks, sir. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Here we go, any questions or comments from the poll?
The minute this on, Chair.
In case I need a motion.
Move in the chair. Second by Commissioner Scott Round. Roll call my secretary.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner Bias?
Yes.
Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Disover?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Call Chair Witcher?
Yes.
Chair Richardson?
Yes, the application will be approved. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Let's move to C B B twenty-five dash thirty-seven, which is thirty-one dash thirty-nine and forty-one dash forty-three Central Avenue. There's more.
Sweeting. Madam Secretary, if you can bring in, I'm sure he's Alex Malucci. John Cortel. Ruben Teak. I believe that's. Right. Um and for the record, I'm Marsha Moore from the law firm opposed Pollard on behalf of the Appken Central Housing Managers LLC. So. This application is not unfamiliar to some board members. I am truly delighted to be back here for this application. Um just gonna give you some brief background, we do have our witnesses and representatives to the board have any additional questions. So the property is located in the corner of Central Avenue, Halsey Street and comprised of two lots, that's lots eight and twenty-three. In block twenty-one and is commonly known as thirty-one dash thirty-nine and forty-one Central Avenue. Um it is located within the Broad Street Station redevelopment plan area, sub-district C. The Washington Park Cultural and falls within the Saint James Commons Historic District. Well, we originally appeared and Mister Malucia and I, Mister um in two thousand and seventeen. And then in two thousand twenty, the previous owner came before the board a proposal for a much larger, significantly larger project. And that was a ten-story mixed-use building with a hundred and two residential units, approximately. Over thirteen thousand square feet of ground ground floor space. That project did not move forward for various reasons. Um this current applicant, Central Housing Managers. With support from Prudential, as since revisited, modified. And really dive into what makes sense for this lot. And what we're proposing tonight is a much smaller development that is, we believe is more appropriately scaled. And would make financial, more financial feasible to reflect the parking conditions for this what's known, this this what we deem this corner to be very iconic. This long underutilized corner on Central and Halsey. So tonight we're seeking amended approval in terms of, I mentioned, scale and intensity, we're reducing the number of units from hundred and two to seventy. Reducing the commercial space to over thirteen thousand to about eighty-eight hundred more or less regarding the commercial tenants. And also other modifications. Uh just by background, we did appear before the Historic Landmarks Commission on May, on February fifth. And that board approved the demolition of the existing lot, of the existing structure rather, that's on lot eight and also the design. And I can share that that board was very enthused. Again, this has been a project that's been before this board since two thousand seventeen and then two thousand twenty. We, as part of the previous application, the applicant or the project received a number of variances. Um that variances pertain to transparency, the signage, the illumination, the parking and the shade trees. And we are seeking to reaffirm those variances tonight. Under the brought-to-redevelopment plan, we do not need any parking for the residential component. There was a variance granted, a a larger variance for eighteen parking spaces due to the commercial space in the two thousand twenty approval. And we are seeking again to reaffirm that variance, which is at a lesser requirement of eight parking spaces. Um before I begin, we have received several reports. We have received the planner's report dated May first, two thousand twenty-five. Uh we have no objection to the findings or the recommendation. Mister Barry has asked to provide some additional testimony, um and we are prepared to do so. We can confirm that the project will comply with the city Norris inclusion Arizona. And we are also seeking a waiver, uh Mister Malucia will discuss from the Bird Friendly Building Act. We are not seeking any additional variances. And I'm also in receipt of the Department of Engineer memorandum dated April twenty-nine, two thousand twenty-five. Though that report's consistent with the prior conditions and the applicant will agree to comply. And last but not least, I'm also in receipt of the comments from the Water and Sewer, Department of Water and Sewer. We also find that consistent, um, and our architect will discuss some of the improvements that we agreed to make in connection with this application. We have provided affidavit of service to the board secretary. My first witness will be Alex Malucci, where we discuss the, um, design changes and the amended plans. So I would like to call Mr. Malucci.
Good evening, you saw me swear the testimony about to give this board should be truthful?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name, affiliation to the record, and whether your license is current and in good stand.
Sure, my name is Alexander Malucci. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I'm a partner with the Firm of Englaze Architecture and Engineering. I have my bachelor in architecture from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. My license is current and I've appeared before this board in this capacity many times. And twice on this project.
Sir, so Mr. Um, Chair would ask that you'd ask, accept Mr. Malucci, um, as a licensed architect.
Yes, you're accepted by the board, please continue.
Thank you.
So, Ms. Malucci, I indicated that we, we've been part of this design team, um, for a number of years. We are seeking amended approval tonight. If you can just walk us through the presentation. We've appeared before the Historic Commission, but if you just walk us through the architectural design of this project.
Yes, so we need to mark this as an exhibit, Marcia?
Yeah, so this is, um, Madam Secretary, if we can just have this marked as A one, Mr. Malucci, this is consistent of twenty-nine pages. And this is a combination of what was submitted, however, it does have some of the renderings and the presentation that we submitted to the. Landmarks Commission, so A one, um, what is the date?
The date is, sorry.
It's probably outdated.
February fifth. Twenty-five, twenty twenty-five.
And it's just twenty-nine, twenty-nine sheets.
Thank you, Marcia. Um, as Marcia mentioned, I won't reiterate any of the, the statistics, but we have been before this board before for this project. And we're excited to be back because we believe that this, um, project, which is now scaled down, is, uh, feasible and attainable. And we hope to move forward quickly to bring new life to this corner. Um, so as Marcia mentioned, the property is located at the intersection of, of Halsey and Central Street. Uh, sorry, Halsey Avenue and Central Street. Sorry, I said that backwards, Central Avenue and Halsey Street. Um, it's located in the Broad Street Station Redevelopment Plan, Sub-District C, and the James Street Historic District. And there is an existing building onsite which will be demolished to make way for this, the new proposed building. You can see the existing, um, conditions, this is a, an older version, but there is currently sidewalk. Bridge installed to protect the pedestrians. And you can see the degraded state of the interior of that existing building, which we have separately received approval from the Landmarks Commission. Just to kind of highlight the change in, in the proposal here, what we had previously approved was a ten-story building. You can see the old proposal on the left, ten stories and one hundred and two dwelling units. With thirteen thousand square feet of retail at the ground floor. What we're proposing now on the right side of the page is a six-story building with seventy apartments and eight thousand eight hundred square feet of. Retail or commercial space at the ground floor. Um, one of the things that we modified here was to bring the height down and to lower it beyond the height of the adjacent VA building. Which I think was, it was, uh, an area that, uh, of concern in our prior approvals. So just to highlight some of the design decisions, and then I'll walk you through the floor plans, there were some, um, real, really clear, um, conceptual design moves made here. Um, to highlight the single-story datum that exists, um, on, on Halsey Street, um, on some of the historic buildings. To respect the height of the cornice on the VA building, which caps art, which aligns with the cap of our building. To create a separation between our new building and the adjacent VA building by creating a step back, which we're calling the hyphen. And so, um, what we're proposing again is a six-story building with a, um, a dark terracotta or similar material base, which is. Um, respectful and, and, um, uh, relates to the existing building which is being removed. With five stories of residential above it, um, in a red brick, uh, variegated brick texture. Um, with large black windows and, uh, black metal panel between, between those windows. You'll also see large ground floor storefront into the, the lobby, um, on Halsey. And then the, um, the retail or commercial space, uh, wrapping from Halsey onto Central Avenue. This is a, uh, proposed, uh, rendering of the building at night with the, the lighting that will be on the facade. And then a view looking down central, central, um, towards Halsey Street. Can see the adjacent Salvation Army building. And then a zoom in of that, that ground floor condition. Um, this is just a highlight of the materiality on the building, the, the variegated brick and then the dark panel at the base. And then a view of the interior lobby where we will salvage some of the existing building that we're removing and reinstall it within the lobby. Um, I'm going to skip forward to the floor plans now. Um, so just to orient everybody, Central Avenue is on the bottom of the page and Halsey Street is on the right. We have our proposed lobby access off of Halsey Street, um, with a small management office, package room, mailboxes and bike storage. We have a trash compactor room buried behind that, the building will be served by a trash compactor for all tenants above, um, with direct access out to the street. Um, you can see the eight thousand. Square feet of retail, commercial or amenity space that fronts Central Avenue and Halsey, wrapping the corner. And then our utility rooms located up against this Salvation Army side of the building. We are proposing a building on the property line, however, we will comply with the ordinance requiring, um, egress to be preserved from any adjacent buildings and any adjacent windows. Um, we, we do not believe that there are any windows that we need to deal with, we do need to coordinate with Salvation Army for any of their, their egress requirements, and we will do so. Moving up to the typical upper floors, you can see the L, the L shape of the building. Um, with the courtyard located in the back. And the building includes a mix of studio, one, two, and three bedroom units. Um, with a single elevator and centrally located trash room. There are two staircases in with, within the building. And all of the units will be adaptable as required by the state of New Jersey, that means that the unit can be converted to a handicap accessible unit. When required by the tenant. Um, I just want to talk a little bit about the facade. Um, a little bit further, Marcia mentioned about the bird safe glazing, while we are proposing a masonry material and solid panel. At the base of the window, um, and between the windows, we are using standard glass within the windows and would. Request a waiver for the use of standard glazing i- in our window areas that exceed, uh, ten square feet. Um, we also do propose that the building will be, um, Energy Star New Construction or Equivalent for a Sustainability. That Energy Star program requires that the building perform at least fifteen percent better than code minimum. And we do anticipate to, that we will meet that, that requirement as is also required by. Um, New Jersey Housing and Mortgage Finance Agency, who will be providing, uh, tax credits for the project. Um, skimming through the conditions to make sure I didn't miss anything, Marcia, um, I want to just address on the. Site plan. Quickly. Um, we are only proposing fo- four street trees along Central where, uh, where five are required. And we intend to pay into the tree fund for that missing street tree. Um. We will, we are proposing. Switching back to this, we're proposing, uh, packaged terminal heat pumps or PTHPs for the apartment cooling, so there is no. There are no condensers required for the apartments, there will be some HVAC equipment located on the roof and it will be set back and screened. That equipment will serve the common area or retail and amenities.
Uh, I just want to address, uh, just to go back on that shade tree, so we did seek, or obtain relief on that shade tree. But there, again, it would just be a payment for one shade tree along Central Avenue?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, the only other thing that I wanted to address that was in the planner's report was specific to the interior courtyard. Um, we anticipate, I'm just going to skip to the floor plan. We anticipate that this outdoor courtyard will be utilized by the building tenants and by the future retailer who is unknown at this time. It will include a mix of landscape and hardscape and will be designed based upon the ground floor tenant use. So the, the, um, we will provide typical landscape details and we'll finalize that design once we know who the, who the tenant is. Um, we have reviewed the engineers and, uh, the engineers' report and the, the report from Water and Sewer. And we do agree to comply with those conditions. Um, I would like to just indicate that one of the requirements on the Water and Sewer report. Was the extension of the twelve-inch high-pressure main from University to Halsey Street, which we had worked with Water and Sewer on the prior approvals to. To accommodate and do plan to accommodate the same, uh, as part of this application.
And then along those lines, I mentioned, there is also, again, compliance with the, the amended ordinance for this, for stormwater management.
Yes, so this package, the package of drawings that was submitted was updated to include compliance with the current. Um, ordinance, including future adjustment for stormwater requirements. I believe that concludes my testimony, Marcia, I did, um, I should also mention that I, I think you covered this as well, but. We are seeking a variance for eight parking spaces, which is a reduction from the prior approved variance of eighteen.
That is correct, um, and then you also mentioned, um, reference to the engineering report that we can comply with conditions of approval. Reference with that April twenty-ninth report. And also with the exception of the waiver that we're asking for, for bird friendly. The comments referenced in the planner's report, we could agree to comply with those as conditions of approval, is that correct?
Correct, we do agree to comply with those.
Uh, I. Note that Mr. Traffic County is raising his hand and maybe so in respect to an existing. Eastman, I believe, or encroachment into the right of way. Just find my notes on that. Um, page, page four in the report notes a canopy into the public right of way.
There is one canopy above the residential entry, which is just, just to provide protection from the elements. When tenants are entering the building, that encroachment into the public right of way will be, be compliant with the New Jersey IBC for encroachments into the public right of way. And this is similar to other canopies that we've installed elsewhere in Newark.
Thank you. Um, again, this application is a modification, reducing the scale from a hundred and two to seventy, reducing the commercial space to about eighty-eight. Hundred square feet. And then, um, again, we've repro, uh, received the approval from the landmarks pertaining to the demolition as well as the design. I'll open it up to the board if they have any specific questions.
Mr. Traffic County?
Sir.
Hi, Mr. Traffic County.
In the Department of Engineering's report to the planning board, they, they, April twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-five. Believe it's on page. Three, under item four, demolition site plan, enrollment number three.
Yes.
Advocate shall provide testimony to the board as to what the existing monitoring well located within subject block twenty-three, block twenty-one is for. And what is its future disposition? Will it be removed, capped and abandoned in place, or will be extended to finish grade and remain in use?
We will request the environmental engineer inspect that test pit. And we will provide full documentation for, um, its purpose and its eventual disposition as part of our response and, uh, resolution compliance.
Well, what do you know as far as the situation, is it still contaminated? What's it there for?
I do not have the answer to that question, I do not know, and we'll ask our engineer to verify.
Well, you, that's going to have to be resolved, right, before you, you can build, right?
Agreed, I, I do know that they have engaged an environmental engineer and have evaluated the site, I do not believe it's contaminated. Um, and, and we will make sure that that is, that is resolved as part of our resolution compliance.
And the other question I have is, your survey notes a deed overlap with this joining lot to the left, which it was.
Yes, that is the Salvation Army lot, um, and that, we believe that that deed overlap was to address. Um, egress from their existing building, which we will agree to work with them to preserve, whether that's by way of, uh, uh, walkway between the buildings. Or into and through our building, uh, we will preserve the egress that's required out of the east side of the Salvation Army building, which is what we believe that overlap is for.
Right, which is like seventy-four square feet or so, I believe.
Yeah, it's small, and, and our client, um, i- is in contact with the operators of that Salvation Army building. Um, I can pull up the, just for reference, uh, to make sure everybody understands the building we're talking about, it is. This building here. Um, and they, they are, uh, in, in contact and working with them to, to, um, resolve and preserve the, the requirements of that overlap. So that's this building.
And then, uh, last thought, last question. In the engineer's report to the board, we recommended that the out, we're missing one city shade tree. We recommended that, as a condition, I guess, I don't know, was it recommended as a condition or not. We recommended that the applicant meet with the city arborist, the board planner and the Department of Engineering to see if there's someplace you can plant that one missing shade tree. Before you tree bank, is that something you'd be willing to do?
We'd be, we would agree to meet with the, um, tree specialist and the planner to, to determine if there was an opportunity to replace it on site.
And the Department of Engineering, right?
And the, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to leave you out, Department of Engineering, sorry, sorry. My, my bad.
You're my pole right away.
Okay, no problem.
No further questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Here we go, next witness.
Um, that, so just so you, as mentioned, we are seeking a parking variance that was previously granted. As part of this application, we provided traffic and parking evaluation against the variances less, it was previously eighteen. We're now seeking a variance only for the commercial aid spaces. We would rely on the, on the report unless the board has specific questions of our traffic engineer. Other than that, if, if not, then I conclude my presentation tonight.
Thank you so much. All right, so, no questions or comments from the board? Commissioner Jordan?
Uh, good evening, I'm, I'm trying to find out how long is this project going to take?
As far as construction timeline?
When is it going to start?
Um, so the.
How long is it going to take?
The current intent is to submit for, uh, tax credit funding, uh, next week, that's May. Um, and usually the, the award is not heard until the fall. So the earliest the construct, the construction would begin is the second quarter of next year. And it's anticipated to be approximately a twenty-four month construction period.
So what is, what is going to be happening with the project while you wait for all of this stuff? That's a whole nother year.
Meaning what will happen with the existing building onsite?
Yes.
I don't, it has not been confirmed yet, our hope is that we would, we would demolish the building. Or while we're waiting for the funding to come through, but I don't think our client has finalized that, that, uh, intent. So it may sit in its current state until we start construction.
But just so you know, if we do have to, we've obtained the requisite approvals from the landmarks.
I thought you had already approved.
We do, we have landmarks.
Yeah, we have landmarks approval.
So what is different about this plan? Than the previous plan?
That's a really good question, so we, the, we reduced the scale of the building from ten stories to six. And the number of units from one hundred and two to seventy. While that may seem like a marginal reduction, going from ten stories to six stories. Due to the building code requirements allows the building to be built out of a combination of concrete and wood. Whereas a ten-story building is considered a high-rise per the building code and requires more expensive building, building construction such as cast-in-place concrete. Or other non-combustible measures which are more expensive, and it also comes with other expenses related to high-rise construction like stair pressurization. For fire and other things that are only required when you build a high-rise building. So this type, this type of building is intended to be, um, less costly to construct and therefore, uh, more feasible.
Do you have a breakdown of? The, uh, affordable housing component, or should I say inclusionary, con- inclusionary zone component?
So, uh, go ahead, Marcia.
Go ahead, I, I, I will say that we do intend to comply with the twenty percent affordable. I will ask Alex, I don't know if we narrow down the, the apartments, but it will be compliance with the inclusionary zone.
Yep, correct, and we have not identified those apartments as of yet.
Okay, but you have one, two, and three-bedroom apartment, right?
Correct, uh, and stu- and studios.
And studios, so how do you plan, how do you estimate you're going to? Distribute these between affordable house, and do you have any idea?
They will be scattered throughout the, the building, all floors and all apartment types, so we will, we will ensure that, um. We will meet the uniform housing affordable, affordability compliance, and that, that requires that we have affordable apartments of all types included within the building.
Commissioner?
No further questions.
Yeah, bottom line, it's going to be a while.
Yeah, yeah, it's going to be a while, and it's already been a while, it's already been a while.
It's going to be a while long.
Yeah.
I, I, I can tell in being part of the project commissioner for so long that this developer is invested. I know we've, you know, we've met with the rep, the city representative. We, the feedback that we've gotten from landmarks, this is a project that we believe at this scale, um, is feasible. It's, it's been a while, but we don't want it to be a while, we definitely want to move that corner along. I, I've known this developer and I've known the design team, and this is something. I've, I've known this developer and I've known the design team, and this is something that we are, we're, we want to move this along. So, um, to the extent that we can get, we, the, one of the issues also is the application that's due next week for tax credits. And that's one of the reasons why we wanted to make sure that we move this project along, so.
Who is the developer again?
This is Central Halsey Managers. It's, it is a different developer. Uh, Principal is John Cortel with, with Prudential. So, um, I've, obviously you've known the good faith that they've done with other projects, but this is something that we definitely want to move along. We don't want to come back on this, and I'm sure you don't want to see us again, so.
But because there's also the concern, I'm one more, I'm just going to make one more comment. There's also the concern about the other, um, on the other block, a block away. Uh, the Arcadia Flores Building that is vacant and abandoned also.
Is that the one right across the street, Commissioner? At the, at the, at the same corner, but on the opposite side?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Is your concern just that this corner has been kind of dark and empty for a while and, and hoping? Yeah. Uh, I think we share the same concern. I think we, I think our hope is that this puts us on a path to being able to resolve this. And that we are on the, um, the last ten yards of being able to get this across the finish line.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jay.
Yeah, I know you, uh, testified earlier regarding, um, potential contamination. Um, what's your timeline on demolition? And like, what happens if you do find that, you know, it's contaminated and so forth, and it's going to take an exorbitant amount of money to clean up?
Um, our, our intent is to complete demolition this year. And, um, I believe the environmental work, I believe the site environmental has already been evaluated. I'm just, I don't have that information specifically. Um, what I, what I, what I understood was that there was an oil spill, which is common, where there's an underground oil tank and that the remediation has already been completed.
And, and your engineer attest to that, or this was done from a, a outside party?
Uh, that was done by an outside party. I'm not the engineer that did it, so I can't testify to it. I think what I should do is include clarification in our, um, engineering response letter as part of resolution compliance and make sure that the full detail of exactly what the condition was and how it's been resolved is included in the, a resolution compliance.
That's typically by a licensed LSRP, but certainly as a condition of report, we can provide those documentation to the city for their review.
Yeah, they completed what's called a phase one, which is the first portion of that, of that site evaluation. And, um, Whitman Environmental was the engineer that completed that work.
Okay, so the phase one was complete?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And what was?
Sorry, I'm not, I'm not dodging your question. I just, I just didn't do it myself.
No, no, I understand. No, I, I can, I totally understand. Uh, what was the previous, the use of this, um, property?
This building has, um, uh, as, as it's, as it currently stands, it had, um, has vacant commercial on the ground floor and then vacant office on the second floor. Historically, I don't know what, I don't know, you know, a hundred years back what it was.
Got it. Okay. All right, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing now, any questions or comments from the public?
Seeing none at this time, Joe.
Need a motion. Move by Commissioner Byers. Second by Commissioner Timmons. Roll call, man.
Commissioner, this over?
Yes.
Commissioner Jordan?
Yes.
Commissioner, Scott Roundtree? I'll come back. Commissioner Timmons?
Yes.
Commissioner Byers?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Commissioner Scott Roundtree? He's absent. Coach Richard?
Yes.
Chair Richardson?
Yes, your application has been approved. Good luck.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Have a good evening.
You too.
Uh, we have some minutes from April twenty-first and the twenty-eighth. Everyone had an opportunity to review the minutes. Any questions, comments? Coach Richard?
No, I was just saying, yes.
Oh, I thought maybe you wanted to move.
Um, we accept the minutes?
Yeah, we accept the minutes.
From April twenty-first and April twenty-eighth.
Okay. Move by Coach Richard. Second by Commissioner Jordan. All in favor?
Uh.
Eyes have it, so move. Mr. Beck, the floor, but wait a minute, before we do that, Mr. James. Now, a little while ago, you were on the beach. You must have a private jet or something, dog.
I bought it from the, I bought it from the laborers.
Mr. Beck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have, uh, numbered resolutions to be memorialized this evening. First off, number one, CPB twenty-four, twenty-eight, one eighty-four dash one eighty-six Ferry Street. Number two, CPB twenty-four sixty-four, two fifty dash fifty-two Elm Street. Number three, CPB twenty-four ninety-two, three ninety-nine dash four oh nine Central Avenue. Four, CPB twenty-four one oh seven, two fifty-three, two fifty-five Fourth Street. Number five, CPB twenty-four one one three, two ninety-two, three oh six MLK. Number six, area needed redevelopment, five oh two dash five fourteen Mulberry Street, one sixty-nine dash two oh five Mulberry Street. Uh, and lastly, uh, one of the resolutions that we, uh, 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 applications we approved this evening was CPB twenty-three, I'm sorry, twenty-five dash thirty-seven, thirty-one dash thirty-nine and forty-one dash forty-three Central Avenue. All those commissioners that vote, uh, affirmatively are permitted to memorialize him.
Thank you, sir. And, um, the next meeting is May twelfth. Please make a note, we have a meeting on May thirteenth as well. So we'll have back-to-back next Monday and Tuesday, two specials. Uh, I hope everybody can make it. And as always, please stay safe out there, everyone.